All those opposed? Okay, if I'm the chairman now. And election, somebody want to nominate a vice chairman?
Yeah, I'd like to nominate Greg Shue as vice chairman.
That's what it always works.
Is that for second that? All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Okay, so Greg Shue is the vice chair. Then, discussion, moving on to the next item. Discussion and possible action on this ordinance. We all got, it seems to be three options.
Five.
Yep, five. Yep, five options.
So, who wants to open up the discussion on this? So, just to be clear. The ordinance now said the frontal dune is the big dune that's in between the ocean and the house, correct? Like in this picture here that we got.
Yeah, the frontal dune definite, the definition for frontal dune, as it written now, is defined by the dune that is basically the most substantial to protect the structure. And so, the town has a frontal dune designation and Kama has a frontal dune designation. So, you have the possibility of having both the town's frontal dune and the Kama frontal dune as being one, or the town's frontal dune can be more landward forward of the Kama dune. It can't be the other way around because of the way that we interpret the rules, but that's what we have at this time.
Okay, so they're saying that these, that like in this picture here, that the one that's completed that doesn't go all the way to, that's the new ordinance? Because the frontal, the frontal dune is back here.
No, we, we, basically, we're not defining, we're not redefining the frontal dune.
Right.
We're not redefining the frontal dune at all under, under that section. We're just not, we're not doing.
We're just saying that they can't build any further out right now.
Right now, the way, the way it reads right now, you can, you can't have any structure other than one or the four-foot wide wooden walkway shall be located south of the landward toe of the frontal dune. And it said this applies to decks, gazebos, sitting areas, and other additions that are property owner may desire to make to the allowed walkway. And then it goes on to say that structures that exist when this section is adopted may remain in place temporarily, however, all such structures must be removed no later than December 31st of 2003. It says in order to be in compliance with this section, a building permit is required if there are any repairs needed to walkways loaded bearing services such as supporting posts adding additional length to supporting posts and shall constitute a repair. Exceptions, and town, town-owned Kama accessways may utilize a six-foot five walkway. And then the exception is property owners with lots that have more than 300 feet from the seaward toe of the frontal dune to the last line of natural stable vegetation, as determined by the local Kama officer, may install a single walkway with a maximum width of four feet, and the walkway shall be a minimum of three feet high with a maximum height not to exceed four feet, and shall terminate at least at the last line of natural stable vegetation. Walkway shall be permitted and built in accordance with the federal, state, and local building requirements. And then the last exception is swimming pools may be located south of the town's designated frontal dune placement of pools and decking shall not exceed more than 50 feet from established seaward toe of the designated frontal dune. And this exception only applies when the Kama dune is more seaward than the town's frontal dune. It's, it, it, the ordinance in its, in itself, and this is how staff feels about it, and I can go through the presentation if y'all would like, like me to. But the staff feels that the ordinance as written needs some minor text changes, but this ordinance does not need to change and it does not need to move. And that's how staff reviews it. And when I say staff, I'm talking about every staff member that I've talked to. Not a single staff member who's been here with any kind of historical, for any amount of time that would make them have any idea of what happened in the past, or those that have been here for the last 13 years, including me. We, we don't see a problem with this ordinance, or a negative effect with this ordinance. We, we can't find it. And we don't, we've not had a whole lot, we've, I don't know, maybe one person has asked to have their walkway go out past the, the seaward side of the toe of the, of the town's frontal dune? Maybe one.
That's how we got here, right, didn't this guy?
I guess so, I guess it's that guy. But that, but that is a, that picture is totally misleading because that is a town walkway right there next to it. If you go down there and look, you'll see that all them other walkways from all them new houses are lined right up with that. They are lined right up with that. You go down there and look.
So, it sounds like the issue and the reason that it was raised was because of foot traffic through the Kama portion of the dunes. Right, the Kama protected zone of the dunes? That's my understanding is that, that's why we're talking about it.
Yeah. They're saying that without the walkways going all the way out, that somehow traversing the dunes somehow makes it less resilient.
Right.
Which staff can find no evidence of that. And like I said, the, what we, what we find from staff is that, that the effects of going all the way out are much more adverse than what we're discussing about the, the foot traffic through the dunes.
In what way?
Okay.
That's what we found in the other towns that were, that actually that I called to check with, that it could affect your, your CRS rating.
Yeah, see, we, we, our, our rules, all of our rules and all of our regulations are bundled into a package that gets looked at when they start looking at how we protect our structures and how we protect our beach to protect our structures. And so, our resilience factor, along with our NFIP rules, are a primary part of those, that point system. So, get, put it together. You're not increasing your resilience by taking walkways all the way out. What you're doing is increasing your obstructions and your debris, which is not considered resilient when, when, in other words, if it's something out there that can be tore out, tore down, and becomes an issue during a storm as far as an obstruction, that's not considered resilient. There's been some new changes in the way FEMA does stuff, and I can let Chris talk about that. Chris can also talk about the historical, historically what has happened with all those walkways. This, this ordinance didn't stop people from going all the way out there. This ordinance used an event, or numerous events, to bring them back. Not to stop them from going out. If, if you look, not only did it bring it back, but it said if you had anything wider than four feet, you got to start taking them down. They can't stay there past 2003 unless if, if we find them after that. For the last 13 years, we've been making them, taking them down as hard as we can. Because the, the, the history shows that them going out has a lot more adverse effect on the town, especially during storms, than keeping them back.
We had said that we, you guys were going to look up and see how the ordinance got where it was. What, what events?
But that, that, I think you can, I think that Chris has some insight to that, but as far as town staff knows, we know that it was because of the amount of debris, yeah, it, yeah, it was, it was because of the amount of debris that was created during storms that then had to be collected and sifted and moved. They were all tore down. See, what happens is, I, I guess y'all guys realize that when you take a walkway all the way out, let's say that that's a homes walkway right there, okay? You take it all the way out to that last line of natural stable vegetation to pass that last Kama dune. When the storm comes in there, to, to act as if the, the storm coming through a foot path is the problem. What happens is when the storm comes in there and takes out that front, that frontal dune there, it's now whatever how far that, that water mark comes and that residential line comes, it's now become public trust land. That has got to be removed. You can't, it, they can't stay there. And if the, if the ocean didn't remove it and then put it in the neighbor's yard to be cleaned up, the town has to clean that up. And, and the last storm that we had, the big storm that we had, me and Ron the walked from the east end all the way to the west end, tagging hundreds, I know it had to be hundreds, of walkways that ended up in the public trust area that were still out there that hadn't been brought back to be removed. That's what we did. Chris, you want to talk about the new requirement?
Yeah, can y'all hear me?
Yeah.
I know it sounds like a wonderful thing, you know, somebody wants to extend the walkway out, and I kind of halfway understand that on the, on the homeowner's side of looking at things, but there's a lot more negatives than there are positives doing it. And I started here back in the 90s, we were fortunate enough that we seemed like we got two hurricanes a year. I was actually thinking to myself after I started here about a month that maybe I'd picked the wrong place to get employed, it was such a nightmare. And when those walkways were out there like that, man, it was just a massive debris field that was there that you had to deal with when you come back after the storm. And when Tim was talking about the FEMA requirements, back in the day, anything that happened on that beach strand, whether it be sand or what have you, you know, that all contributed, the dollar amount of that damage contributed to the threshold that we had to meet in order for the county to qualify for FEMA systems. Well, all that's been changed now, anything that happens on that beach strand is not eligible to help the dollar amount for that threshold, and maybe I'm not saying that right. In other words, that won't do anything for us. If we let somebody extend all those walkways out there that far, and we've got all that debris, yes, on the town, they actually have to pay for the cost of cleaning that up, and we probably won't be getting any kind of reimbursement or anything. Plus, I actually, kind of backstepping a little bit, you know? I don't know if any of y'all were here in the 90s, but some of those storms I'm talking about, we actually had sand that was actually building up to the, to the bottom floors of the, of the houses. I mean, it was a, it was disastrous. It could also delay you from coming back after a storm. You know, everybody's in a hurry to get the beach open back up and let's get back going for business, but if we can't open the beach up, you know, ain't nobody going to want to come pay rent in the house, and you can't even walk down the beach strand, so many lumber and debris strode around, and as Tim was pointing out, I mean, you got these massive structures just floating around during the storm. I mean, that could damage people's homes and stuff. There's, I could probably go on and on saying why not to do this. I don't think it's, it's negative, doing anything negative for the town, because if anybody goes out there and looks at that beach now and looks at the vegetation and what we've done in the last 10 years, can't say that we're making headway like we are. I don't know what planet they've run with this. I never would have thought that I'd seen that beach get that state that it's in right now. And I also asked, the other talk, if you'd like to speak, there's kind of a issue with having an emergency situation for emergency personnel and stuff to navigate up and down the beach with a vehicle, you know, somebody's drowning or something like that, and you need to get out there. If you've got all these walkways extended out and you can't drive around on high tide or what have you, you know, that's, that's, that's putting the public at risk. Maybe I'm not saying that right. Doesn't want to speak any on that, but you chime in, or, or think I'm pretty much it. I mean, so there's a lot of things to consider, you know, rather than just, you know, like I said, I know the homeowner wants to stand it out there and I understand that, but there's so many negatives, that I just don't think it's the thing to do. I think it could be creating a disaster for itself. And another flip side, another thing that I also failed to mention, I can remember back in the day when we first started doing dredge projects, we were actually going through there and having chainsaw them out of the way and stuff, so you could do a dredge project. Some of the homeowners moved them, some of them didn't. They didn't move them, you know, we had to move them. So, there's a lot of negatives, and I just don't feel like that's the direction that we need to, need to head, and that's pretty much my view on it. Let's go to something to add. I, I know I spoke to him about the emergency deals there, you know, for lifesaving measures, getting personnel out and navigate up and down the beach. And, and also, the other side, is I seen it when it was like that at one time, and what I see now, the crowds that we're drawing here in the summertime, it's, it's, it's kind of scary to see what you see out on that beach strand in July now. And then, you know, you start extending walkways out there, that's the less realistic from the bill, so you can just imagine how tight that would be. That's my two cents to what it's worth, but I'm, I'm highly opposed, and I said I've had to deal with some of those, the downside of what happens when you put them out there. That's about all I can say. Listen, if I've got any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions?
He's the one to talk to about the history.
Well, I think I basically did get history, but like I said, back in the 90s, when I first started here, we'd be getting hammered two storms a season, you know? I've seen it, you know, like I said, the sand up to the bottom of the houses, and it took us a month or so to recover. And at that time, if an R development was in business, and we had every piece of equipment they had over here just trying to get sand and stuff sifted up, you know, where you could, where you could open the beach back up. And another thing now, too, it took that long then, the FEMA requirements now, you know, I can't just hire anybody off the street right here with a dump truck, saying, you know, come on over and help us get recovered, you know? It's all about being, it's got to go through channels now, and it's more difficult than it was back in the day, but that's about it.
Anyway, what I'm saying was, they had to sift the sand to get the debris, obstruction debris out of all those walkways that were out there. And then there's a, there's a little history in here. It looks like that shortly after Floyd is when that ordinance was written.
Excuse me?
Yeah, written shortly after Floyd and gave it to 2003, that's not, not only that they had to be prepared to be removed, but also to take down those four-foot wide.
And I know we ain't talking swimming pools right now, but I'm gonna tell you, people seeing what I've seen, they might have just put swimming pools on the backs of their houses, and we get hammered when it's going, talking about somebody's gonna have a job on their hands.
So, so, I mean, you've heard from the planning director, there's the Kama officer right there, we heard that about how the water was washed through there, because people would walk, that she has something she wants to say about that.
Yeah, it, historically, when we talk about the walking paths, if you look at the beginning, if you go through the winter and look at it at the beginning of the summer, you're gonna see where that stuff's filled in. If you build a wooden structure and the storm comes in and takes the dirt out from under it, you're not gonna see that fill back in. It's gonna remain a trough, a trough right under the wooden walkway. I mean, there's some out there now.
Well.
And she's, she's telling me that.
Yeah, nothing ever builds back up those way.
That's what we saw when we were out there, having all of those walkways. We actually documented it and took pictures of it.
The foot has fields.
And I actually did a presentation, I think, I think I did a presentation, and mentioned that, 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 all the provisions when we did, of all the walkways we were covering up. It was, you could document it. It was, it was so fresh in our mind that whenever we rebuild the walkways over here down here on the east end, we actually had them put boards underneath them to catch the sand, because without something to catch that sand, it, it, it has the opposite effect.
Right.
So, maybe it's just an issue of semantics, but when the walkway doesn't go all the way out to the Kama dune, and the rule says don't walk on the dunes.
There, there, the, the rule does not say that the property owners do not walk on the dunes.
Okay.
Doesn't say. I, I heard that, that it doesn't say that the property owners do not traverse their own dunes.
I think that was designed for farmland people, really not very, 10 or 15 years ago, and I just decided to run it across the dune and decide something up his house.
So, the property owners can walk on the dunes?
And, well, rather than.
An exception to this policy is the oceanfront property owners on their agents, whether agents may traverse on or over the precipice portion of the frontal dune within limits of their property. It's right there in this agreement.
That's the frontal dune?
Well, yeah, but it's through the dunes. It's, it's, an exception to policy, oceanfront owners on their agents may traverse on the precipice portion of the frontal dune, dunes within limits of their property, above the main high water mark.
Okay.
Above the high water mark. So, as to make minor dune or various plant based stations fall standard, and otherwise maintain the frontal dune in their property, that it may afford to a 10 degree flood protection under the big floodwater zone.
What section is that?
That's, yeah. It was also, that was also brought forward in the Kama land use plan years ago, there was, there was a discussion, when we did the exception on the west end. Now, let me clarify the exception on the west end. The exception on the west end, if you go to the west end, you will find that no one is allowed to have a walkway over the last Kama frontal dune. The west end exception was written to get them through that slosh down there, because they had, they would have had to wade through water. And so, we went down there and measured what the distance would be to the other side of the slosh, which was 300 feet for whatever the exception said. And then we made, then we landed them on what we consider the best line of vegetation on this side of the Kama frontal dune. There's no walkways going across those dunes on the west end. We don't issue that front. So, the exception in here was only not to get them across that, that part of that dune, not to walk them over there to the other end, it was only to get them through the water. That's what the exception was written for. There's no other place on the island where there's water between the property owner, large swatches of water, or the capability of water between the property owner and that last, that, the Kama frontal dune. It would be an issue if they were both the same, but that's one of those areas where it's not the same. Staff's also not recommending that this be moved. And the reason we're not recommending that it's being moved is because of this. I originally said I recommended it, but now after everything that's happened and the events, doing this, and talking to staff, I now don't recommend it being moved. And the reason I don't recommend it to be moved is because all those variances don't set a precedent, variances are used against you when, when you start getting variances for the CRS rating, for the, for the CRS stuff, and variances from the flood line. They are actually a negative effect. You get a variance in a base flood elevation, a dime flood elevation, or off flood plane ordinance, or NFIP, it, it is actually held against you with the gun to your insurance bills. Variances are like the worst thing you can get from the flood line. It does not need to be moved out of the regulatory section. In the regulatory section, it will be more consistent, and it will be pretty much in stone-like speed. You can't do it. It would be the best thing we can do to do this, or just out. And that's staff's opinion, staff.
Just leave it where it is, is that what you're saying?
What I'm saying is, I gave, I've given, I think it's five options. I've got five options, and I got a PowerPoint I'll be glad to give you, but there's five options. There's one that the staff recommends, and then there's all these other options that y'all can look at and determine whether y'all like something better or not.
Well, I thought at the last meeting you were very supportive of it being moved to 157.
I was, I was very supportive until I got to talking to staff, and I got to looking at what they're, I had no idea, it had not dawned on me that flood plain variance is as bad as not even following the ordinance. We have to turn them in. If we give an ordinance variance to the flood plain rules, we have to literally turn that into the CRS bill. That's not something they have to come find. The guidelines say you have to turn it in and a point start going down. Like, we were given variance to put something in the flood plain, somebody was applying to have their house built too low, or applying not to have something that's in our air pocket, we have to turn that in. They don't have to come look for it, we have to turn it in. That's why I say this don't need to be moved, it, it doesn't. And the resilience factor, the resilience factor for our, the fact that we have stricter construction standards helps, also helps from the other factors. And I don't want to get into it too much, but I can tell you that your building design evaluation, your NFIP, your town ordinances, your hazard mitigation plan, there is a trough of stuff that is basically regulatory rule that gets used in your CRS rating. The more stringent it is, the more staff it is, and they look at it, and they review it, they give you points for it. You go, go in the other way, you're losing a point. We barely made enough points to drop one, to drop one, which gave everybody a 15% reduction in their flood insurance. And when I say barely, it, it could be, it could be disrupted by as much as you need. That's how, how we're hanging on by. So, I, I don't recommend it that, I would not, didn't have a problem with it before because I felt like people needed to have an option, but now, I've been reviewing it 100%.
Well, if no one has any questions at the moment, would you take us through the five options you're suggesting?
Go ahead, Tom. All right. All right, there's, there's five options. There is no change in the orders to remain in 9403, which is exactly the way I just wrote it. Well, there needs to be some changes, oh, especially some text amendments because of port, port of the top. Number two, the orders chan, do the orders changes and report to remain in 9403. I mean, go to this next slide. Well, go back, we'll go through this change, let's go back. Three, staff preliminary changes based on input, move to 157.024. Four, move to 157.024 with no changes. And five, staff recommending changes to remain in 94.03. All right, so, I'm not sure it was much difference between two and five, but we'll take a look. This is basically the ordinance with no change. The ordinance has been the ordinance book, it's the one I just read here a few minutes ago. And, and you can leave it in there as it is, but there is sections in, let's see if I can find them. There is sections in portion of a frontal dune policy, a one, a two, a three, and a four, and a couple of texts that need to be changed in six. If you've got a copy of it, I know it's in fine print, but if you've got a copy of it, basically what it amounts to is, is that where the ordinance says that walkway shall be constructed only in building material approved by the North Carolina Building Code, that is incorrect, it's North Carolina Residential Building Code. That is two different codes, one's commercial, one's residential.
We don't have any commercial properties that we need to be concerned with?
Well, if, if you did, it wouldn't matter, the building code's gonna require those to be engineered, so it's just gonna automatically upgo over into, we're talking about the residential process, so.
Okay.
If we do end up in a commercial, like an office building or something that's out here, then they would end up, you could get an engineer designer. And then, the first step down to the beach strand, shall be placed note for the seawards at the beginning of the downward, the downward slope of the dune. And it says of the, of existing lines of startment determined by the average, averaging the downward slope, or I'm trying to read the fine print, took you over here.
If you look at option five, Tim, I think that's what you're explaining, actually describing.
All right, well, existing lines of, of startment determined by the average downward slope from the start line for the property in question, and those properties, properties directly adjacent. That, that, there's a line in there for the existing line all the way to adjacent, needs to be taken out. Needs to be taken out. Three, says steps shall be opened treasure structure on the natural rise at least 125 inches and a minimum tread depth of nine inches and shall meet the requirements of the North Carolina Residential Building Code. And it goes in to say, in accordance with the North Carolina State Division of Coastal Management and Enforcement Coastal Land Management Act, the walkway access to the beach strand, all the frontal dunes shall be completely presumed to entail negligible operations of the dune. Says the walkway shall be raised on toes for files at a minimum of two feet and a maximum of five feet depth in the dune. That is a rewrite of the building code and is illegal. You can't, you can't write, rewrite building codes yet. Building code determines the depth of the file and, and those dunes. Says in no case shall the walkway be commissioned, if it will, in the opinion of the local Kama permit officer, diminish the dune capacity protective barriers against flooding. And then, of course, six has two texts that need to be replaced. No structure other than D should be one, and then, on the other end, it says structures other than the one four-foot walkway. It's said D, which indicated one, but we thought that that should be changed to the number one. And these are the recommendations that staff recommend, which is option five. Same change with Kama, right? Option two, it's the orders to change, orders changed to remain. With all those changes we just talked about, but, and this is the one that was talked about and discussed at the last meeting, and this change is with all the changes we just said, but we, we removed the exception for property owners with lots that have more than 300 feet from the seaward toe of the frontal dune to the last line of natural stable vegetation, as determined by the local Kama officer, may install a single walkway with a maximum width of four feet, and the walkway shall be a minimum of three feet high with a maximum height of 124 feet, and shall terminate at the last line of natural stable vegetation. We're deleting all of that, and we're adding a single walkway allowed to tend to the seaward toe of the most oceanfront dune as located. to the seaward toes of the most oceanfront dune as located by the planning director or desert manager. But in no case shall it extend beyond the last line of natural table vegetation. That's, that was the language that we added, that was asked for, or was, indicated that y'all would like to see. We don't need the exception no more. You can't deny them the ability to go over that front dune if, if, if we're gonna write the kind of language that lets everybody else go to the vegetation line on the, uh, over the last dune. And that's, that, and so that's the option two, which is the ordinance change, but to stay in 9403. All right. This is the ordinance change, just that we just saw. It, it's ordinance three, staff preliminary change based on input to 157.024. So, what we do is, that's the, the same language I just read, but to be moved into the land use section. Move it there, you're opening up the, the Pandora's box. And then, option four, is no changes in the ordinance at all, and move it to 157.024. Of course, um, option five. Option five is the staff recommending changes to remain in chapter 103.
All right. Any discussion by the members about...
Well, we did vote at, at the last meeting to move it to 157, so do we, if we're not gonna move it to 157, do we, do we need to make a separate...
I think we just make a determination here which option we want.
That would override that one.
'Cause that was just a motion for the staff to do a draft.
Right.
Yeah, that was not the move.
For the board.
Nothing's a move.
I think the staff options make sense, option five, personally.
Is that a motion?
Uh, I'm an alternate, so I don't know, I think I can make a motion, so. Disintend you.
Um, yeah, I'm comfortable with staff recommendations. Um, I appreciate the discussion and the information that was shared. Certainly clarified some things. Um, now, for option five, this is the proposed text, is that correct?
Yeah, this is it.
Um, so, if we decide to accept option five, then what's the next step after that?
Well, if we decide to accept option five, then what, what, what we can do is, if you wanna do it instead of doing, then what you need to do is, you need, we need to put it out for public, uh, put it out to the public.
Okay.
And then bring it back, and y'all can both send it to the board immediately. We will then do the same thing. Basically, what we can do, we're gonna advertise it to the public, and this is what you're proposing. Proposing, and then after the public's had a chance to come and make the input, then, uh, you will vote then to either approve it or deny. And then you could do all docs, if you wanted to, but if this is the one you want, then you can, you can do that, and then you can vote to send it on to the board immediately. We will then follow the same process again, uh, the opinion. Thank you, Senator. Uh, 9403 don't have to, don't have to, uh, to go for public comment, but I always recommend that it does, because it's in regulatory. It's like, I can speak, you know, a rule for speaking, that's not language. But I always recommend we do, and they always do, we always advertise it if you approve it, that we're all...
Well, if we don't...
It's just good business.
If we don't need, if we don't need that section in there about the three hundred feet that you had in there before, seems like maybe two might be the better option, then to take that out. He was saying we didn't really need that in five, you know, it takes out, that leaves it in, that section about the property owner's exception of having lots more than three hundred feet. We didn't really need that in there, if we took that out, and then you just said, had it in there, what it says under two, a single walkway allowed to extend to the seaward toe.
Now, three hundred, I said if you did the text three hundred out, if you take, if you add that addition to that, because then...
The single walkway.
Yeah, because then they won't be able to go past that last front dune that everybody else can. So, if you're gonna add that, that new language, you got to take the exception out.
Right.
Because if you're not gonna add the new language, you need to leave the exception in.
Right.
Because there is a real, a real reason why that's taken. I mean, a good reason.
Right.
And again, expect them to walk through, wait deep water, or, or during a storm, that can either wash out, and that, that area can wash out during the storm. So, and we, like I said, if, if you go down there and look, you'll see, we have not allowed them to go across the Kamala Kamara Dune down there. They stopped it on this side. It is not much different than the exception when they were lots, that have enough water to allow, enough water to allow the pool to be on the other side. All we're doing is trying, if you've got the right kind of lot, you got the right kind of condition, then you deserve, you deserve exception. But if, if, but if, if not, then you got to have a valid reason. There's a big difference from the west end, where those walkways are, and the thousand block with eleven hundred block, where there's a good dune system out there with black muds and grass and other things. And it's, sometimes it's hard for us to tell what's going in which, so we can, you know, really get down and try to figure it out.
Is staff confident that three hundred feet is the right number? Is that ever going to increase?
We've been using that number now. It's, I voted. So, that would be... I would say it was twenty thirteen. We've been using it since twenty thirteen. I'm pretty sure it was twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, that exception was real.
I think it's a, a good number.
Yeah, that three hundred. And we didn't, what we did was, we went out there and measured, I think, we had a very gay school out there, and we actually measured the toe of that dune, we measured the distance across there. We figured out where our east point was, where the ship took the water, and where the swash was, where it was coming in, and where it was going out, and we determined the depth of the best option we had to get them across the water, but not all the way out to the beach. That was a very good, that was a, a real good amount of work done, and a good presentation, thanks for going to support. It wasn't to come to the board, planning board, or this regulatory board. It wouldn't be here now, but they asked for us to bring y'all these options, for the, you know, to have the discussion.
Well, I would like to make a motion to proceed with, uh, option number five, as presented by town staff, to, uh, present it publicly for comment.
Yeah, that's what we need to do.
I'll second that. All in favor? All right, all opposed? Okay, I'll sort it out this.
Yeah, they worked good, but they didn't want to take back the option.
Yeah, oh, that's good. So, I, I think it's, the town did a great job on that, and brought us what we wanted, the reason. I don't think that it was a knee-jerk reaction changing that, uh, thing. I think it's, uh, I think we did good with what they suggested. All right, do we wanna talk a little bit more about this, uh, town issue that we talked about, the lot that we added in?
I can just give you a little bit more background, because I'm gonna bring this stuff to you. That is gonna be a land use issue, uh, is staff, uh, instantly, we're actually bringing it over, staff bringing it over. We, we dealt with it, I think even, uh, we had our two houses that maybe Wade was involved with. We've been dealing with it since I've been here. Uh, it didn't hurt those folks down there if they want to improve their homes, if they can. Um, if they, if the houses get to move, then it's going to be a big adverse effect on them based on where their flooded lifeline, floodlines are, and where they can deal with at this time. Um, but it's mainly for the existing structure and its performance. Um, it's the same thing on the east, it, it, it's always down there. There's, there's quite a few of them, we haven't counted them all, me and, me and, I know where some of them are, but, uh, me and Carrie went by yesterday, and it's kind of a funny drive-through. And it looks like it starts at the end of eight hundred, and everything, yeah, and goes up to about a thousand. They can tell that there's an issue there. Um, but they need to be identified, we need to take that section, I think there is a, you know, survey somewhere that shows where the road moved, and the easement didn't... Maybe I can explain this to you a little bit better. What happened was, was that when Haley came through, and all the lots, the lots had been flooded, the easement didn't move. When they put the road back, they moved the road. Prior to all the ordinances, or some of the ordinances, contractors in order, or the town probably had a different rule or something, and in order to keep the houses in line, they measured from the edge of the road. And then sometime after, a lot of houses got built, I don't know when it was, an ordinance came along that said, you down, you step back from now, maybe from the flooded lifeline, which would be the edge of the ride. So, the ride way that was always there now became the measuring point by, by standard, by, by rule, when they were all measured from the road, but it didn't affect anybody where the, where the, where the road was in the middle of, where it was supposed to be in the middle of the east. It only affected those where it moved farther away, but it moved the houses, which is the flooded lifeline, and made them all on the form of the town's current ordinance. And that's what happened. And so, because of that, I, there was a long education process, if the bottom line here, you can add or not overuse. And what happened was, is that if you've got a, a home that has a thousand square feet, and you decide you want to substantially improve it, can't do it, on the form. You've got a home that's high enough, which would be easy to substantially improve it, because that's the biggest factor, but you can't because of the very reason that it's not on the form. So, um, or if the house was burned down, and it's got a slab underneath it, now you pretty much can't build back from where it's at, or you have a major event that takes it all down, except for tile, you know what I mean? That's, that, and you're gonna be, you have issues by the building back. It's, it's, uh, the best thing the town can do as far as stewarding and for their citizens is to go recognize that area, and get it in, help them get into compliance, you know, somehow, with where they're at right now. There's just too many of them now. One thing to be known, it's a different wrong place. One thing to have a situation in one of them that creates that one non-conformity. Problem is, is that you, you, you would, you would force anybody down there in that, in that situation to do something, that is because of the board adjustment, and get a variance, you know what I mean? One at a time, instead of go ahead and handle it all at one time. And we can do it, like I said, the standard rule that he said on the east end years ago. We just need to do it and bring it.
We're ready, we're ready for it.
Yeah.
Amen.
I mean, if y'all want me to do it, I'll do it. Y'all got to vote for me to do it. I can staff instigate, but y'all got to give me that much.
Is that, I mean, do we need, is that something we need to do?
Yeah, you need to make the motions to have me look at it, bring me something back.
Well, I'll make that motion to, uh, have Tim put this all together and bring it back to us for us to review. I'll second it. Anybody, all in favor? All opposed? All right.
Does this have any impact on the paving project that's...
No, because the road, the other thing, the easement didn't move. That, that was the problem, the easement.
It didn't move.
And they wouldn't, they wouldn't be non-conform.
Okay.
And it's, it's basically what it amounts to is, is that if, it's, and I've seen it before, where roads were at, and then they could either get repaved or get moved, and it just seems like back in the old days, everybody measured from the road, so everybody's house would be in line with the road. And just so happened that after Hazel, and that's what I was told, the, the road got moved off center, and probably up until, I don't want to say probably the late eighties or early nineties, and this ordinance was adopted, you know, maybe eighty-nine or something, the ordinance got changed, that says that, and probably when the storm war was done, or it started to happen, it's like, you had to measure from the flooded lifeline, then everybody down there canceled. Then none of them were measured, and they didn't road, they measured from the flooded lifeline.
So, so with the shifting of the, the road over to the south side, it's not gonna solve the problem? Well, the paving project, it was explained that it was gonna be like seven feet on the south side?
The flooded line is measured from the east. The road moving back and forth to the east, but they're changing it off.
Got you.
All right. Comments? Anne, you have a comment for us?
I want clarification on the ruling you made on the, on the, um, walkway. I mean, I, I understand what you're saying, that it was the same.
Anne, can you walk up to the microphone, please?
I'm Anne Arnold, 124 Salisbury Street. Please give me clarification about the ruling that you just ruled on for, uh, option five. As I understand, you will not be able to build across the dunes anywhere except unless there's three hundred feet. Is that what you just agreed to?
No, no, there, there, well, there's an exception, it's always been in there, been in there since one thirty. And the only change, that what they voted about, the only changes were those text amendments to, to clean it up. That's the only change to do. The rest of it did not change.
Okay. That's the answer that I, that I need to go back to my people with, because they are, they're not wading through water, but they're wading through brambles up to their shoulders to try to get to the beach. So...
Are they in the three hundred foot?
No, no. You're two hundred ninety-nine, or two hundred seventy-five. And there are multiple dunes, but they cannot build further than the toe of the first dune beyond their house. And so, they are, they are, they don't, their guests do not own the property. Does that apply or not apply? There are just so many questions I have.
Does property owners own their agents?
So, are their guest agents?
Well, whenever you rent a home, and you are the owner of that home while you're renting, you are...
That's right.
Right.
All right.
That's right. So, they can walk over the dunes.
Okay, any other comments, anybody? Okay, um, uh, if there's no more discussion, then I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Okay. Everybody good with that? We're doing that right?
Yes, sir.